We have seven o'clock. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask clerk. Call roll please.
Jim Benage.
Here.
Jeff Elshoff.
Here.
Jeff Hawes.
Here.
Betty Martin.
Here.
Justin Smith.
Here.
We have a Coram Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. I'd ask that all of our council members turn on their microphones. Have those on. And with all of our meetings, we do begin with a moment of silent prayer. If you'll join me in that. Amen. Now please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance for the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to welcome everybody to our second meeting of 2018. This is the first meeting with a new city council, so I want to begin by welcoming new council members who are up here. Those of you watching at home, you may notice that the new faces up here. The swearing-in ceremony took place last Monday per state statute, and here we are to get started. The first thing to come before council this evening is the consent agenda. The consent agenda simply consists of the minutes of our January 3 meeting. I think most of you have commented to me by now you're watching it at home for that and were able to see that. And of course, you saw the comments and everything made, but those minutes are there for approval of the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
I second.
We have first and second. If there's no questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor, is it appropriate to comment or ask a question at this time?
That would be a que-- yeah.
Just for the city staff, there was a motion last time, and it was approved to increase the reward for the Christmas light challenge. And I just wanted to understand, it wasn't clear to me exactly what that reward is other than $500, but it seemed a little ambiguous to me. And I just wondered if it was clear in the staff's mind what the reward will be.
No, and actually, since we've got probably 11 months, what we thought we could do is put together some proposals for you on if you're interested in keeping that $500 first place, or but bring some options to you, and then you could clarify that for staff.
That would be much appreciated, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
That way you guys can actually decide what happens this year. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda motion? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, next is appropriations ordinance 2018-02. This is in the amount of $388,043.62 appropriations ordinance. This shows every single penny that the staff spends, and we do get to go over that at every meeting. Expenses did include this time to some of the highlights, included a $25,000 for our annual workers' comp premium. That was a big one. We also had our 2018 WAMPO dues, monthly IT payment. That was $3,300. We had $156,000 for hedgerel payment and $72,000 for 53rd Street payment. And then there were various other operational costs that we have on an ongoing basis. But before council this evening, here's appropriations ordinance 18-02.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to pass ordinance 18-02 in the amount of $388,043-- I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
First and second to approve appropriations ordinance 18-02. Any questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. City requesting appearances. I have none before me. This is the time now where citizens concerned, if any one in the audience wishes to address council, they may do so at this time. Seeing none, we're going to move on to reports. And we normally start at each end, but for the sakes, this is your first time, we're going to start with Council President Betty Martin. Sorry.
That's not fair.
It's, I think, you just, you got this.
About the only thing I have, Mayor, is I did attend the CCUA meeting, and they are being held at Bel Air now at 4:30 on the last Thursday of the month. Jeff is Elshoff?
Elshoff.
Elshoff is the new CCUA person, and I went back to being an alternate, and they did very good. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. With that, we're going to go ahead and start with Mr. Elshoff. Do you have a report this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say that I'm thankful to our Creator for this opportunity to serve the citizens of Bel Air. We are a community that is rich in blessings, and I recognize that, and I'm humbled by this opportunity. And I just want to say that I really want to thank all the voters of Bel Air, all the residents, all my neighbors. Everybody played a role in participating in this republic process that we have, and I'm very appreciative of that. And I just want to let the citizens know that I intend to do what I can to be a good steward of our resources here. I am excited for this year, 2018, and I am glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I second what Jeff had said, but other than that, I have no report.
All right. Councilmember Benage?
Yes, and I thirded all the comments previously, and do appreciate the voter's support of this council. We look forward to exciting 2018 and see good things for the city of Bel Air.
Councilmember Hawes?
I agree with what Councilman Elshoff said as well. I also do want to say we do have a community development committee meeting on Thursday. We are in need of volunteers. For anybody watching at home that would like to volunteer, I know on the website there's some volunteer opportunities that they can sign up for. We are needing volunteers for just about everything in the city. Other than that, I have no report.
Thank you. And I have no formal report tonight. Otherwise, do want to let the citizens know that on Friday, January the 26th, Bel Air will play host to the Winter 2018 Regional Mayor Summit. And that's our honorary hosts. That are Mayor Shelley Hansel from the city of Wellington, and Mayor Jeff Longwell from the city of Wichita, and Mayor Hines from the city of Eldorado will be hosting that. That's January 26th. And it's an honor that Bel Air is going to play host to have all of the regional mayors here. With that, we'll move on to city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report this evening.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. I'd like to welcome the new council members tonight, and I know myself and staff looks forward to working with you and making this year a great year, as Mr. Elshoff said. 2018 new home numbers are in, so for 2018, we had 28 new duplexes and 66 single-family homes constructed, which totals 94 new housing units. So that keeps pace with the last two years. We've been averaging right at 100, so that's very impressive. We're one of the fastest-growing communities in the Wichita metro. I think I saw earlier in the Business Journal Wichita had about 700 new homes. So for a town of 300,000, they have 700. In a town of 7,000, we have 100. So I think that kind of proves, even with Wichita, that we are growing fairly quickly. So that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Any committees wish to speak tonight? Now we'll move into the ordinances, resolutions, and final actions for our agenda this evening. Have a relatively short agenda. We will elect a council president. We're going to look at a delegate for the Kansas World Water Association. We're going to discuss a industrial revenue bond, and look at a services contract, and a development agreement. So that is all before council this evening. With that, we'll go ahead and jump right into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. The first thing to come before council is item A, which is electing a council president for this calendar year. City code requires that we have a council president and that he or she be elected among seated city council members every single year. Betty was the council president for about the second half of 2017. We kind of realized we did that, I think, kind of late spring to kind of make sure we got caught up, so that this will take place every January along with when new council members are sworn in with that. So didn't know if there was anyone who would like to serve, jump in and serve that role for 2018. Did speak with Councilmember Martin briefly just before the meeting. She indicated that she is willing to serve another year if that is the will of the council. If there's anyone else who would like to jump in on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I motion for Justin Smith as council president for 2018.
We have a first for Justin Smith to serve as council president for 2018. Is there a second?
Second.
First and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Welcome, welcome. So as council president, when I'm not here, you'll run the meetings.
Okay.
And I warn you--
I hear you have a stellar attendance record.
Yeah. Except for the very first meeting, right after.
Yeah.
Betty for that, so. I'll do that, okay. Item B is consideration of appointing Anne Stevens as a voting delegate and Dave Leicher as an alternate to the 2018 Kansas World Water Association Annual Meeting of the Membership. Bel Air is a member of the Kansas World Water Association. Of course, we're a member of many different organizations. This association represents water suppliers, including cities and municipalities. Their annual meeting will take place on March 29th. The end of March, they're at Century 2 in downtown Wichita. Our city does get one vote, so required to have a voting delegate as well as a alternate. If there's any council member interested in attending and being a voting delegate, speak up. And if not, that our public works staff will be there. They're there every year. And the public works director, Anne Stevens, has indicated that she is willing and that she can serve as our voting delegate, again with Dave Leicher, who's our assistant public works director, to be the alternate, again, for the Kansas World Water Association Annual Meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion--
Yes.
--to appoint Anne Stevens as voting delegate and Dave Leicher as alternate voting delegate to the 2018 KRWA Annual Meeting of the Membership.
A second.
First, and we have a second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving right along. Consideration of a letter of intent. Mahaney Roofing is looking at bringing their corporate offices and central warehouse to the Bel Air Industrial Park. This is exciting. The park is located on the northwest corner of 45th and Webb, next to Wickham Glass. Many of you may know Wickham Glass is one of our very first tenants to come out here to Bel Air. The company plans to employ 40 full-time workers and construct a 42,000-square-foot office, and which will also serve as their warehouse. Our staff has reviewed the Wichita State University cost-benefit analysis and determined sliding tax abatement would be appropriate. And what we do with that is anytime we have corporation coming in wanting to do an IRB, as we work with WSU on this analysis, they do to look at the offset for the tax abatement. But at this point, I'd like to see if our city attorney or city manager have any additional details or comments we'd like to share with the council this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just elaborate a little bit, since this is the first IRB the council is considering. We don't have a lot of these. Couple times a year, we'll have a business come in, and of course, that's part of economic development. When they're looking at where to locate their facilities, they'll look at different cities and see if anyone is willing to give them tax abatements or things like that. They actually like the site there, next to Wickham, and so they would like to be there. So they asked what kind of incentives Bel Air might be willing to give. And so what we do is we have an application they have to fill out, and explains the number of jobs that they're going to be creating or bringing to the city, the value of the building they're constructing, because that assists or adds to our tax base. If they're going to be bringing in out-of-state guests or things, and if they're going to be staying here, those are the types of questions we ask. So we get that information, we send that over to Wichita State University to do what's called a cost-benefit analysis, and that is required by state statutes. So there's actually state statutes that talk about industrial revenue bonds and how they're to be considered, what's required. And so the industrial revenue bond process is one where the company actually has to go get their own financing. That's not something like when the city sells bonds, then we go out to the open market and find out who's going to buy these bonds and things. We don't get involved in that. The company has their own financing. The city is not responsible in any way for covering financing. If they would go under or whatever, then that's between the bank. The city simply is the conduit which allows for the state statute of IRBs and tax abatements. So if you would approve this IRB, none of that financial impact comes back to the city. So what we look for in the cost-benefit analysis, you'll see that the city has the ability, in fact, it's in state statute, when we issue an IRB and do tax abatements, every taxing unit has to follow what our tax abatement is. So in other words, if we get 100% tax abatement, not only are we giving up the city's tax portion, but the school district, fire district, everybody. And that's required. They don't have a say in that. That's something that the state legislation allows cities to do. So when we look at the, and I include that in your packet, so if you look on page three, that's the key that we're looking for. You see that it talks about city fiscal impact. It's got county fiscal impact, state, school district, et cetera. And what the bottom line of each one of those brackets says a benefit-cost ratio. And what that means is anything over 1 is that the city gives up a dollar in taxes but receives something greater than that in benefits. So in other words, if you look at this, it's 1.91. So for every dollar that we give up on taxes, we receive a dollar and 91 cents in benefit back to us. So obviously, we always want to see greater than 1 if we're going to give up some taxes. And you'll see that the other taxing units give up additional. The county has 2.3, the state has 5.8. But we always look at what the city's impact is. So we know we have that. Then the other piece is, okay, so what kind of tax incentives? Obviously, we don't give cash, anything like that, so it's just property tax. And so I also included in your packet a list of the other IRBs that we've issued over the last few years, and the type of abatements that we have given. And so it's key that when we're looking at a new business, we want to look at the number of employees, the value they're bringing to the city, and then comparing that to the other tax abatements that we've given. And you'll see that they vary. And again, it's based on other keys such as the number of employees, the, maybe it's because of the, that they're buying a certain number of acres in our Sunflower Commerce Park, just different things like that. So what I put together and felt would probably be the most appropriate for this size, some of our other companies have built larger buildings or had more employees, but 40 employees is a good, full-time employees is a good employer. I think it was around 3 million that their value was, and that's a good-sized building. It's not, well, an example, Epic is 180,000 square foot. This is 42,000 square foot. So it's not a huge building by any means. And then we also look at, okay, if they're going to locate, what are the, you know, usually their startup costs. You know, when you move to a new facility, you've got construction costs. Your utilities may go up because it's a bigger building, things like that. And so what I proposed was basically a simple sliding scale. So the first year, they would get 100% tax abatement. That allows them to get in their new building, get adjusted to, you know, purchase new furniture, things like that. And then over the next 10 years, it kind of drops to 20%, 30%, just kind of a sliding scale. And then in year 10, they're basically paying their full property taxes. And that really allows them to have some benefit the first few years as they're growing, and hopefully adding more employees, and they'll bring more business in so they can start paying the property taxes. The other thing is to keep in mind is today, that's an empty lot. So there's receiving a few hundred dollars because that's what it is. So by having a new business come in, that's, right now, we're receiving nothing. So, you know, that's always the question is, what are we giving up? Well, today, we're giving up a few hundred dollars because that's all we get out of that empty lot. Building us $3 million facility, then over the next few years, hopefully, valuations will rise. That building becomes more valuable every year, and that starts bringing in a tax, additional tax base that we don't have today because it's an empty lot. So I hope that kind of explains the different things that I look at and that I want you to consider when you're looking at IRBs and tax abatements and things. And it's just part of being competitive. Every city offers different types of tax abatements and such to lure new businesses and such. So. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah? With the 40 employees, is that from the start, or is that what they hope to build to after?
No, they, they're bringing, and in the IRB, you'll notice that there's certain things that are in here that they have to accomplish. And if they don't, then the council can pull this. It's basically clawback provision. So building has to be at least 42,000. We've had it where they designed a 42,000-square-foot building, and it usually takes six months to a year to get all the design work, I mean, the actual engineering, construction, and everything like that. And it ends up being bigger than the 42,000. So that's great. But we don't want to give them or offer them some type of incentives, and then they put a 20,000-square-foot building. So that's a requirement. It has to be that size. The employees, by year four, they have to be at, at least at 40 employees. So whether they're bringing 40 with them, or whether they're bringing 30, and then we'll hire up to 40, you know, that's their decision. But they have to meet that 40 employee, full-time employees by year four. And the same thing with the 2.6 million. It says that they have to reach that 2.6 million. So again, they can't build a smaller building with less value and get the same tax advantages that they're getting now.
Appreciate the explanation and great question. Councilmember Hawes, this is something, again, with IRBs that, a little bit complicated, but appreciate you explaining kind of the nuts and bolts of it. And it would remind everybody getting at home, this is an empty lot. And what I like about this is we get the origination fee, and they start paying taxes the very next year to help them get started. The other thing to keep in mind, too, with this is more businesses that we get there attracts more businesses. That's, you know, kind of what we're in a position where we need to look at for economic development, retail, restaurants, those type of things. These are the type of numbers they look at at how many people are there that might come over the lunch break or something. So for that. And exactly like what Councilmember Hawes asked about, this holds them accountable to do what they say.
Mr. Lasher, who owns this property today?
I believe it's owned by the McAlises--
Okay.
--who own Empress Bank, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lasher, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Could you, just for the benefit of everybody, especially people at home that might be watching this, could you define what is meant by tax abatement?
So a tax abatement is, only deals with property taxes. So state law, again, under IRBs, requires that cities issue a 10-year, 100% abatement. But within that legislation, we can require pilot, which is, if you read in here, you'll notice it says "payment in lieu of taxes," which is a pilot. And so basically, what that, when we say that, for example, in year five, we're abating 50% of the taxes. So in year five, it's a $3 million value of a building. The county appraises that, sets an annual tax, property tax payment, maybe it's $20,000. So what, their tax statement will be zero because it's based on 100% tax abatement. And then they'll turn around and write a payment to this, Setwick County, because it's split among all the taxing authorities, of $20,000, or whatever 50% of the value of the building is. And then it's distributed out to all the taxing authorities. So we're talking property tax only.
I have a question in terms of the history of our use of tax abatements here in Bel Air. Included in the packet is the information of past IRBs and the schedule for different tax abatements for the different companies that our city has given them to. Have we had a company that received a tax abatement that left after it was completed, left the city, or closed up shop and closed up?
The only one that we've had an issue with was the 2013 Conchier Surgical Recovery Center, which is in the, it is off of Webb Road in Tier Verde. But that building is still there, and they're trying to get it leased out. So we'll have to look at the new, you know, whoever they have in there as to whether they'll meet the requirements to receive that tax payment.
Okay.
So just one.
Do we have any other questions? Now I would entertain a motion, item C.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to propose a motion that we consider a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for Mahaney Roofing Incorporated for a 42,000-square-foot office and warehouse located in the Bel Air Industrial Park.
Second.
First and second, just want to ask our attorney, you had mentioned that we consider, let's see, Karen, would you amend your motion to have the language say "to approve"?
Yes, I would amend.
Yes.
Should I clear that up?
Yes.
Okay, you and I both got that.
Okay.
Wonderful.
I see that now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
As be one of those three words, so, okay. We have a first and a second to approve the IRB letter of intent with Mahaney Roofing. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice little win for the, to start off here. All right. Item D is services contract with Payne Township. Bel Air, actually, we are required, we have to maintain half a mile of 53rd Street going east of Greenwich, as well as a quarter mile of 127th Street south of 53rd. This is due to annexations that took place in that area, and you can see on the screen and in your packet, kind of an outline of that map. Our staff has been negotiating with Payne Township to take over maintenance of these sections to alleviate the city going that far east. And they've been negotiating for a while, I think. And they can be maintained in a better fashion with one entity handling maintenance. That makes sense when you have one, and you're not starting stopping on path and all that. Our city engineer, Director Public Works, Ann Stevens, is here if you have any questions about the agreement or would like to have her explain anything. I do appreciate you being here, but again, this is the, the agreement so that they can, you know, be maintained, like I said, in a better fashion with just the one entity handling all of the maintenance.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor. So we have quite a few roads here in Bel Air that are in need of maintenance, as I think everyone at home watching knows. This contract, I think, is to spend around $10,000 to bring the road back up to excellent condition, and then on an ongoing basis, pay the township $4,500 a year to maintain that. I guess I'd ask, how did this road specifically kind of make it to the top of our priority list to focus on right now?
The road is not at the top of our priority list, but something needs to be done with that road. We do spend about $4,500 per mile on our gravel roads here in town. So that is, actually, I think we, it's more per mile, but it works out to about $4,500 per mile. So we do spend about that amount on maintaining our current gravel roads, so that's nothing different than what we would do in town. We would just be working with Payne Township to take over those maintenance responsibilities. Our closest gravel road is on Hillcrest on the west side of Woodlawn. So we're going a significant distance over to 53rd Street. We'll be saving fuel, time, et cetera, that staff can spend on other maintenance. We did a significant amount of thermal crack repair last year, and we can spend time doing more of that this year. The $10,000 was to bring it to a condition where we could work with Payne Township, and they would be willing to take over the road.
Because we don't think it's in that condition right now?
It's in marginal condition currently. We spent quite a bit of time and effort, city staff did, on our half-mile last year, within the last couple of years. This is additional work on the ditches.
The ditches, okay. I was curious if it was road surface work or if it was other things?
Most of it's ditches, some of it is road surface due to poor drainage due to the ditches being full.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And you appreciate the report that's in the packet. Explain a little bit more about that. This goes back to 2009, I've been working with this. So we used to have the agreement with them. And I'll just read here from the recommendations from that, just that, you know, staff has been working with them, with Payne Township, to draft this agreement to provide for the continued maintenance of the city's portions of both 53rd and 127th Street. This agreement indicates that Bel Air is going to pay Payne Township the $10,000, as we talked about, to assist in repairs there at 53rd Street. And then after that, we'll have the annual maintenance fee of $4,500, which is, like what you said, this is pretty much what we spend to go all the way over there. So it'll be a wash financially for the city, but we'll save our staff time and we'll save our equip, some time on the equipment as well. And that'll be for the continued, that'll be the annual, then, just the $4,500 is what will be the annual payment then. So that is what we're looking at.
And I have a question. Would you characterize this as partly us holding up our end of the bargain as a city in terms of being a good, a good neighbor to Payne Township? Do we have, I guess, would you consider this to be us being just a good, a good neighbor to our neighbors in terms of maintaining this, this particular road?
Maintaining the particular road, yes, it is, being good neighbors. It's working with an adjacent community to be able to provide the best service possible for the residents and users of those roads.
Do we have another section of road that's similar to this, or does this kind of stand out because it's, it's unique either in location or characteristics?
It's unique in the fact that it's gravel. We have other portions in town, 45th Street, for example, between Webb and Rock, that is the east, the west half-mile is owned by the city of Wichita, the east half-mile is owned and maintained by Bel Air. So it's unique in that it's gravel, but it's not unusual, but there's very few areas like that where we have half and they have half. But the gravel is much more difficult to maintain between two entities than a hard-surface street.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Now, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the services contract with Payne Township and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Final item to come before council this evening is a development services agreement with MKEC. Just a little history here, when Elk Creek went bankrupt, this happened a number of years ago, the bank at that time looked for opportunities to liquidate all of those remaining lots. And what happens, we had a developer who stepped forward and who purchased just, well, every single lot except for nine, Lot 9. The reason for that was because it had some floodplain and had some wildlife issues that came with that. So the developer bought the majority of the lots, but did not buy Lot 9. And the bank then offered to give the lot back to the city, so that is why the city has this lot. Our staff has been working with, with engineers, MKEC, on a way to make those, those lots buildable. And to do so, we feel that a replat, which is going to adjust the lot configurations to accept houses outside of the floodplain, and the wildlife habitat is probably going to be the best solution. So you can see on the screen and in your packet how replating that area, those lots there, will allow homes to be built there. Once the replat is complete, the lots then will be sold, and the city gets, will be reimbursed for this cost, as well as all the other holding costs from the sale. So when you see the fee, just know that's how it'll come back right now. Our city manager and city engineer can certainly answer any questions, and he hasn't said so, but I'm going to assume. We see Mr. Jason Gish is in the audience, who is with MKEC, so I'm assuming he, if you have any questions on that as well.
Yes, I have a question. This is just to do the replating work, this is not fill, do the filling in the dirt that may be needed as a result to bring these out of floodplain?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Jason Gish with MKEC. And so the city came to us, we've, we've been aware of this, the county recently remapped all the floodplains in the county, and so we've kind of been watching this and communicating back and forth. But this, there's a kind of a two-fold issue here. The lot configuration that's there encroaches upon that floodplain. So in your packets, if you, and I have handouts if you can't see it very well, but the pink area is a floodway, you, you have to stay out of that. The blue areas there indicate the 100-year base flood elevation inundation area. And what we're going to do is kind of, starting kind of in Lots 3, well, all the lots, from a plating standpoint, will create two lots, if you will, within each of those lots. It'd be like Lot 1A and Lot 1B, or maybe it'd be Lot 1 and Reserve 1. And what, what that will allow you to do is sell the entire parcel to an individual, but when they go to get a mortgage so that they can build, they have to have a free and clear property from the floodplain. So we'll be plating those into two pieces, and at the same time, we'll be going out, and we first have to do a survey, we'll analyze that, we'll get drawings put together that would show that we're going to fill the areas on lots, kind of portions of lots 8, 9, 10, and 11 is indicated on that exhibit. Those are the ones where we can go in and do some floodplain fill and actually remove the floodplain. So for instance, you kind of see there's a finger that kind of protrudes kind of to the northeast. That is an area where we can fill. We cannot fill on Lots 3, 4, 5, and 6 without some significant expense. But we'll get a survey, and we'll take a look at it, and we'll see what we can do. But we will submit basically plans of what we intend to fill on those lots there to the east, and it has to go through a review process. We believe that they'll be agreeable because this isn't a primary flow of that floodplain. We will then, if they're agreeable, make any adjustments to the drawings, then work with a contractor that will have to be hired to go out, put the fill in place, remove the flood, and then we go survey that, show an as-built drawing to FEMA, and it basically clears it so that the map can be modified as, as a fill area. So then that gives you kind of a clean bill of health for that lot, makes those lots buildable. And so, like I said, you'll use the plating to create two lots where necessary, where we can't remove floodplain from a lot, but there'll still be room where someone could build a home and get their mortgage. And the second part is the FEMA piece, and that's to basically remove floodplain so that we can get a clean bill of health on those lots, and they can be sold either the same way as the, the other option I showed you, or we might be able to capture everything and remove it from the floodplain on those E slots. So that's what this is, and if you had a copy of the scope, it kind of tries to go through and give you detail as to the different tasks that we would, we would be performing.
So you would propose filling some areas, and then who pays for that filling? Is that included in the $38,000 contract?
No, we, we would have to go out and solicit that fill. It's a fairly small project, but until we have the survey, we couldn't tell you exactly how much fill is required. But it's, it's a way of moving forward so that you can regain the ability to sell those lots, because they're just difficult right now.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do you have any kind of just rough estimate as to what you would guess the, the fill might cost and how substantial that is?
Let's just say it's 5,000 yards, and that's long, I don't think it'd be that, I don't think it'd be anywhere close to that, actually. So maybe it's half of that. And if you assumed it's a small project and it's $5 a yard, then you, you could be, if it's, you know, if it's 2,000 yards, I guess you'd be looking at something like 10,000.
Okay.
But there'll be some mobilization, there's some compaction things that have to happen, so I don't want to get you stuck on any number, but, so it, it's probably going to be somewhere between 10 and 20. It'd be a high number, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, these are city-owned lots, right?
Yes.
Do we have a kind of estimate of what lots are going in Elk Creek and what we might be able to expect as a, as a payback for these lots being sellable?
I, I'm just going to take a guess, I'm going to guess they're 20,000 each, and they might be more if they have.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe closer to 30.
They might be.
But somewhere around, yeah.
And you recapture those, or you can unload the specials, too, when someone buys them, so there's another benefit there, but.
Yeah. And you see where it goes through there with those nine lots that they gave back. You know, 1 and 2, the ones that are outside that floodplain, those sold and put up homes, and I think those are both valued at over $300,000 homes, so.
Yeah, I think so for sure.
I have a question in terms of, say you move to fill those plots as, as you're, as you're talking about, do you, do you ever need to place fill or material to mitigate erosion from what the future floodway will be reshaped to beyond the plot? Is that, is that typical? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, so Lots 3, 4, and 5 on the exhibit, maybe part of 6, we, we will not be getting into those areas. We don't anticipate being able to get into those areas. I think Mr. Lasher did mention that there, there are some wetland-type areas that the Corps looks over, and, and years ago, there were areas that showed where those, those wetland areas were. If you get down into there, the project becomes much more expensive, and you have to do embankment, protection, and things like that, that would really push the cost up, and then you, it's a whole nother rabbit trail to go down with modeling and such. So I anticipate that we will not be doing much on those. You know, we might, I'll take a look at it, maybe 6 we can clean up a little bit, gain a little bit of area back. But really, the, the fill is going to be over there on the east end.
Okay, so.
Because you can see, like, on Lots 10 and 11, you, you can't even do anything with those.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
With the dirt work that's currently going on at 45th and Rock for the commercial, is that going to affect anything with the, the way this is mapped out right now? I mean, obviously with dirt work right up against that.
Yeah, great, great question. I, I've seen that, too. They have to go through a similar process, and I'm sure that they've shown staff what that is. But they basically have to do kind of a low Marf F of fill. I presume that's what they're pursuing, and, and this area is studied in such a way that they have to meet parameters to make sure that it doesn't affect the neighboring properties or upstream properties.
Any, any other questions or comments here? Basically, just to boil it down, we're taking lots that are unsellable and unbuildable right now and making them sellable and buildable.
Yeah, as I understand it from staff now, you, you get charges from the HOA, and you're not able to, to do anything with these.
Right.
It's, it's a hardship somewhat.
Yeah, the city does pay the HOA and specials right now on those lots, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question for Mr. Lasher. The lots as they are, have we had them marketed and for sale in their present condition?
No. No, because as Jason had mentioned, our codes, you know, require that if you build in a floodplain, you have to bring it out of the floodplain, or they can't get, an individual can't build on there without getting flood insurance, and that's expensive, and so they don't want to do that. As we'd mentioned, these do have special assessments, so the city's covering those special assessments on that, and that's the other reason why we'd like to get rid of them.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the development services agreement with MKEC and authorize mayor to sign.
First, we have a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here and that explanation. I have no need for an executive session this evening. Anything else? And sure, if we have any future issues we need to bring up at this time? If not, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.